I will call this village board meeting to order for November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen.
In just a minute.
Roll call, please.
Joe Zitzelsberger.
Here.
Sam Ballwig.
Here.
Sue Springman.
Here.
Bill Granum. Chris Selner.
Here.
Bill Williams. Erin Moran.
Here.
And Bill is excused this evening. He had a family health issue, so he will not be joining us this evening. Okay, first thing we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance, Julie.
The meeting was published in the newspaper, the affidavits of publication, or affidavits of posting for the agenda, and it was published and available on the village's webpage last week, Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Next, we've got consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled? I'd look for a motion.
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Phil Williams.
Second.
Second by Erin Moran. Any other comments? Okay, call to question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. As have it. Next, we've got public comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to make a comment on something that's not on the agenda for this evening?
I have Mary Heimbecker.
Mary Heimbecker, three oh six West Third Street. I'd just like to thank the village board for doing the online survey for the parking. But I do think that you're missing the option to have several participants. I think only online misses people who might be going into the businesses. So like putting some printed forms in the businesses might have been beneficial to get more participation, specifically the businesses on Main Street that are affected by the parking, and perhaps some in the village center. I go out and I help a lot of people with computer and IT support throughout town, and I just think that people don't do these very much. And printed forms would have been pretty beneficial also in certain areas of town. Thanks.
Thank you. Todd, any comments for this evening?
A week and a half or so ago, I along with a bunch of neighbors in my neighborhood had a meeting with a couple of members of the police department about what's been a rash of burglaries and thefts. Following that meeting, the police department put some information out on their Facebook page, a one pager of tips and tricks for residents on what they should do to best avoid those situations, which basically means being cautious and kind of practical about what you do at your own property. I would add to that that just today, you may have read in the news, but this morning there was burglary. And to be clear, the brashness of the burglars, the people actually went into the garage and started to open the door into the house, which is where the homeowner confronted the people who were doing that. And then they fled and got into a car and then give kudos to the police department, not just ours, but the sheriff's office and Middleton, who worked together to disable the vehicle and capture all four who were in the car. So this has been going about two years now of a trend of teenagers, ages, believe it or not, thirteen to sixteen or seventeen. And there are some issues at hand with the juvenile justice system. And there are some concerns of the law enforcement side of the table about how some of those decisions are made. And they're working towards solutions, but it may take some time. In the meantime, everybody doing their part at their own residence is a good step. And then being vigilant in contacting the police the moment you see or notice something unusual. And that was the key to this being taken care of today, was quick action on the part of the homeowner to call.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Next, we've got presentation update on library construction project. Jeff Vine has been ill and wasn't able to make it this evening. So we're going to be pushing that presentation back to our next meeting in December. Then we have our public hearing to discuss and take action on the two thousand nineteen budget. So Renee, do you want to start and then we open up the public hearing?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so we're just going to go through the latest update on the budget. We've had several discussions already. We had the initial budget presentation on October fifteenth. And then I should have added it to the slide, but we had, on November fifth, we had an update and an additional public comment period to allow more public input on the budget. And then tonight, we will hold the public hearing, and following the hearing, the board will consider the final budget approvals. So we have fewer unknowns at this point, but there still are a couple that affect the total tax bill. We did receive the technical college levy. They are showing an increase of about almost four and a half percent to their tax amount. Now, that isn't necessarily going to translate to a four and a half percent increase on each individual tax bill because, you know, we have the different assessment. But that's what their gross levy is up, as is the school district. Their gross levy is up three point three six percent. And then as of Friday, we did receive the county's levy, and their gross levy is up two point oh nine percent. We still have some things that help offset our tax bill. Those are due to be coming to us this week. That's the school property tax credit, the lottery credit amount, and the first dollar credit. So once we know those amounts, we're pretty much in a position where we give all of our information to Dane County, and they generate the tax bills for us. So sometime, probably the second week of December, I'm expecting that we'll have, be able to mail out the tax bills. So as I mentioned, on November fifth, I gave an update. And so the budget that you're seeing tonight is the same budget that I shared on November fifth. So this presentation just kind of goes back over some of the things that I discussed that night for many people that weren't here, or if you have additional questions, we can go through that. So, you know, one of the big things we talked about at the last meeting was that our manufacturing assessment actually came in higher than what I had projected. So the past couple of years, it had been decreasing. And so in my initial budget presentation, I had, to be conservative, I had also projected a decrease, but it actually came in as an increase this year. So that you'll see when we get to what the percentage increase of the tax rate is. This is helping us have a favorable change from the first budget that I presented on the October fifteenth. So you'll see that, kind of the last bullets there on the increase from this year, or from last year to this year, the vast majority of that increase in the manufacturing assessment was due to Renew Airs project, which is part of TIF seven. So that doesn't directly help our tax rate because that is part of a TIF. But it's part of our overall assessment. And once that TIF eventually is closed, all that value will come back to the village. To help that. Some of the key budgetary outcomes to review again. Our assessed tax rate is going up three point three one percent. And so, like I said, that's a little bit better than where we were at on the October fifteenth presentation. At that point, it was three point six one percent. And an assessed rate was a little bit over seven. And now we're down to six point nine eight seven on our assessed rate. Our five-year average is an increase of just over one percent. On the equalized side, we're still showing a decrease in that equalized tax rate of one point eight nine percent. That's a little bit less of a decrease than what we had in October. And that's due to a few of the things that we added back into the budget once we knew what our manufacturing assessment is. And we'll kind of talk about that on the next slide. In our five-year average, again, that one is going down two point three one percent. Just a reminder that we will be having the revaluation done in two thousand nineteen. And so that will bring the assessed and equalized values much, much closer together. So the rates will be much closer for next year. So how does that increase of three point three one percent translate to the bills? It's about twenty-three dollars per one hundred thousand dollars of value. Again, this is just the village share of your tax bill. So that's down a little bit. Back on October fifteenth, we were saying it was going to be about a twenty-five dollar increase. Obviously, the value of the, average value of the village home hasn't changed since that time. We're just over three hundred thousand. And so the bottom there, you can kind of see, so for the typical average home in Wannakee, the village share of the tax bill is going to be two thousand ninety-seven dollars. This slide is the same as what we had in October. We kind of just do our year-end projections once, and then after year-end, obviously, the numbers all become final. And we'll talk about that one when we're talking about the audit. But we're still predicting a surplus in the general fund of just over a hundred thousand. Again, this is very favorable because we had budgeted in the two thousand eighteen budget for a loss. So the main contributors there are some of the excess revenues. We mentioned this before. There are certain things we don't budget for because we just don't know what we're going to get, including we get a rebate from our credit card, and there's some state aids that we aren't ever certain if we're going to get or not. And then we budget very conservatively for building permits and investment income. So we had very favorable results there. And same with donations. We don't typically budget for donations because you never know if, you know, if you're going to get them or not. On the expense side, you know, the departments, you know, it's, there's a little bit of an overage overall, just about a little under ten thousand, but that's really, there was no particular line item or department that was contributing the bulk of that. It's kind of a little bit here and there across the board. So a few more key outcomes. The general fund expenditures in this two thousand nineteen budget, they are going up about, you know, just over nine percent. We talked about this before, but a lot of the contributing factors there are some of the new hires, the health insurance changes that we're making, our fire and EMS budgets that come to us from those entities, the library, which will be opening mid-year. There's some operating expenses there. We are going to be transferring some money to the capital projects fund to do more capital work, particularly in the parks. And then we have put in a fifty thousand dollar payroll contingency at this point. We talked about this the last time, but the police union negotiations are still taking place. And there's some known FMLA-type leaves that we know about. So we're, so far, or in this budget, we have a fifty thousand dollar payroll contingency to cover some of that, should it be necessary. And if not, it can be redirected to something else. The general fund levy is going up about six percent. It's a little bit higher than our five-year average, again, mainly due to a lot of those additional expenditures that I just spoke of on the last slide. This slide hasn't really changed all that much. We're still in full compliance with all of our debt policies. At the end of two thousand eighteen, we'll be just under forty-two percent of our self-imposed limit, which is fifty percent of what the state would allow us to borrow. And then you can see from the graph on the right, this is essentially predicting in two thousand nineteen, we'll have one more borrowing for the library for the final little trailing costs. And then this is assuming no further borrowings, which isn't necessarily what will happen. But you'll see it drops off fairly dramatically if we were not to borrow over the next several years. Our policy is that we want our debt service expenditures to be below thirty percent of our total village expenditures, and we're well within that limit, and our equalized tax rate to be below two dollars and twenty-five cents. And we're a little over half of that.
Julie? Not that we're intending to be really sweat on this whole budget, but it's really warm in here. Is there a way that we can turn that down a little bit? Sorry to interrupt. It was, I was getting looks in addition to myself feeling it, so.
It feels good to me, so I don't feel like.
I'm thinking I've been cold in here before. I'm with you, Chris.
But yeah, I can actually feel it, so I'm sure other people are really warm. So we did one slide, just kind of resummarizing the departments.
Yeah, we're going to be able to decrease our heating bill for village hall. A few things that jump off the page, sorts that are notable to mention by department here. The senior center had a nice surprise, about a fourteen thousand dollar increase in funding from the county, although it's not entirely a surprise because it relates to the quantity of work that we're doing on behalf of the people throughout the communities that are outside of the village. So that was in addition there. We're adding a dump truck. It doesn't sound, in its own right, that exciting a thing. But what it does mean in terms of programming, at least one thing it does is allows us to expand, with an added fleet, expand the leaf collection period, which is always tricky because either leaves fall too early or they fall too late. And we're always kind of, we always plan wrong for some reason. You just can't get that one right. But if we add on two weeks to that window, we should be good. That also helps with the added streets and the snow plowing that's required to care for them. In the police department, we have some staff additions here. A new police officer added mid-year, and then adding a part-time person to the front office. Not much is happening at the library. Looking at August, to be in and operating. We're hoping to get the keys kind of to the building in July, but then there's a bunch of moving and getting ready and set up. So August is the tentative date. Things are on pace for that. And Jeff will give us an update in a couple of weeks on the financial progress, which is also on target. That building, like the village center, will have a key maintenance person, a building supervisor. I think we're all very proud of the village center and how it looks and feels after ten years of use. We hope for the same outcome at the library, and that's why that staff position is important. In the finance department, we are going to be exploring with our financial advisor firm, Ellers, a capital planning project that'll allow us to look beyond what's been our typical sort of five-year window. And with projects lingering out there that are just labeled unfunded, this is going to help us dive a little bit deeper into, okay, so they're unfunded. How could we fund them? What could be the sources? And we'll work on that. That'll help us plan. Economic development, we're updating the signage throughout the village. That indicates library over here, or over there, or elementary school here. Those things have changed since we last put up those signs. So Adam's working on a project to update those. We've budgeted for the design and then the sign fabrication and installation. The engineering department, continuing our press on the road rehabilitation and improvements. That's continuing in an enhanced way. Community services, there's a collaboration that we're going to be pursuing mid-year where we're going to take what they've done so well, which is maintaining their building and providing their own custodial services and extending that to the village hall and the new library. So our thought is, with success of this internal service delivery with these departments, we'll look to adding the police department utilities and other village facilities in the future. So we're looking forward to that improvement. The clerks department is going to be busy. The new clerk will be particularly busy with the new revaluation project. You probably don't want anything to do with that. That will, Renee mentioned that earlier, but that'll bring those values back together, equalized and assessed. This won't be a revaluation project where inspectors come into every house in the village. They're more going to sort of assess from an economic perspective, looking at data, to make a market adjustment, not a inspection adjustment. So we're permitted to do that once in a ten-year cycle of assessments. So we're choosing that course. The administrators' budget is continuing with funding things that are working to basically think our staff, or acknowledge our staff, or engage our staff in activity. We've, and I thank Caitlin Steen, who was the first HR manager, and now Adam, who spent a couple of years as the HR manager, for being the point person on working really hard to show our employees the value that we have for them. It's been through a variety of different programs, and we're seeing that this has really led to some organizational change among staff in all departments, just in terms of how they feel about being village employees. We're pleased with that, and we're going to continue funding those efforts. That's a summary of the stuff that jumps off the page, and I'm happy to answer questions or dive into other things if you'd like.
I've already been fairly informed on all of this, so if anybody has questions, please feel free to ask. Okay?
Ready for motion?
Oh, we've got a couple more slides. Just to recap on the personnel.
And a public hearing before you move.
Yes. On the personnel expenses, you know, similar to other years, the staffing accounts for fifty-nine percent of the general fund budget. And across all funds, it's a huge chunk, twenty-six percent. The budget currently has a two percent cost of living adjustment across the board for all staff. And then people move, you know, throughout the wage and summary plan, they're moving their steps. That accounts for a big chunk of addition to the budget. And then, as we mentioned, I added a note to the slide that the police department, union negotiations are still in progress. For, you know, their contract goes through the end of two thousand eighteen. So I think the hope is that it will be in place for nineteen at the beginning of the year. But if not, we'll do a retroactive adjustment for them to bring them to whatever they settle on as of one one nineteen. And then some of the changes to the benefits. As we've discussed several different times, we're moving to the HSA program with a high deductible plan. So the net increase, and this includes new employees and changes in the plan, that increases the budget about one hundred and sixty-five thousand. And then the Wisconsin retirement percentage contribution for the village went up just a tiny bit for two thousand nineteen. That's going to add about fifteen thousand to the budget. In terms of the proposed positions in the budget, and the first bullet point on the police department. So this is not a change from the budget that I presented in October fifteenth, but I just changed the slide a little bit to add that part-time office staff person into here. The previous slide only had the officer listed. And then the building maintenance supervisor that Todd mentioned earlier, that will be primarily for the library and village hall. And then the building supervisors that will also work primarily on the library and village hall.
I would just note, it doesn't show this, the net impact, but we are cutting the contracted service for cleaning. So there is a net, there's a decrease element to this, too, on the expense side.
Right, for both the library and village hall.
But you have to have personnel to do it, so.
No, I'm saying, you see this addition, but there's also a reduction in a different line in the budget where we used to have contracted services.
Because we outsource currently to Coverall. So we will no longer use Coverall at the library or here. So there's some savings there. And as, so this is also in addition to the slide from the last presentation. We added the fifty thousand dollar payroll contingency, again, due to the negotiations and some other leave circumstances that will require some coverage over those people when they're gone. And this, just as a note for when we think ahead to the two thousand twenty budget, the impact of all of these elements, we expect close to about a hundred thousand dollar impact on the two thousand twenty budget of the mid-year hires.
With that, I do just want to point out a couple of acknowledgements. Finance department staff have all chipped in, every person in the department. And then Renee is really taking this budget nicely and has run with it and made it her own. So I really commend them and Renee specifically in doing a really nice job with this for us. All the department heads work hard on their own elements of the budget. They're often asked to answer a lot of questions and get poked at here and there on certain things. And it's impressive always for Renee and I when we ask those questions. They've got, they know what the numbers mean. So we feel like we're in good hands with their intimate attention on their departments. Chris was helpful with some internal meeting guidance as we started to assemble this and work through it. And then Sue and the finance committee met to review the policies. So we appreciate everybody's input and assistance.
Okay, so we did a little more input. So I'm going to open up the public hearing in regards to this.
I have Mary Heimbecker wishes to speak, but she would also like you to see, there's only one set, pictures of what she's going to be speaking about.
Hi, Mary Heimbecker, three oh six West Third Street. I would like to see more money for road and sidewalk maintenance put into the budgets. The photos that I'm passing around are just on my block, the third block of Third Street. The two thousand seventeen photos are the damaged gutter at the end of our driveway. I had sent those in to the village, thinking it was a village responsibility to repair gutters. I was told that the street was not on the five-year plan. So my kids and I fixed it ourselves with some concrete mix, and it's held up fairly well. The newer photos I just took today, and as you can see, the entire block is crumbling. It's not just in front of my house. There's big holes and pieces breaking apart. The gutter part that we repaired is starting to crack apart. So I really think that the village needs to. So, I really think that the village needs to figure out a plan to maintain the roads we have, besides just building new roads. And I understand that there's a million dollars and you've been repairing some, but I don't know how that block is gonna last another five years. So, um, I'd just like for you to think about that and, and take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I have Ann Lee Wondowski.
Ann Lee Wondowski, one oh three West Third Street. Like Mary, I'm also concerned about the roads downtown, Fifth Street, as you go towards Heritage, there's a lot of up and down, sort of like I imagine what Woodland was like before it was repaired. Fish Street is also, um, having-
Yeah, yeah, can I, did you say fifth?
Fifth, yes.
I just wanted to be sure.
That's fine. Fish Street, as you go up towards, um, Main Street, coming north, is also in really sort of sad shape, and it's sort of sad to me because one of the reasons I actually moved to Oneokee was I was very impressed with how well you guys kept your roads, and I thought it was something we were really proud of. Um, I saw the huge effort you guys put in with Main Street, I was really impressed, so, when you guys are looking at that capital unfunded projects, please look at the roads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Chris, um, Kevin?
Is that everybody? Oh, sorry. Let me, let me, let me finish the, did anybody else want to address the board on the budget? I will close the public hearing. Todd?
I was gonna put, I was gonna say, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm gonna put him on the spot. In regards to those downtown streets, uh, Kevin, what, what are you seeing in the future plan or potential for those? Are they kinda starting to pop off the, off the page when we do our Pacer ratings and?
I think in general, the committee has made a position, or taken a position that they want to do some resurfacing projects over the next one to three years, and it's not that those projects, you know, there's, we got excessive twenty-five million dollars worth of projects that we need to do over the next twenty years, so it's trying to determine how they rank and in what order we're going to complete them in. And I think that's something that the, you know, Public Works Committee will have to continue to struggle with, I mean, there's certainly areas into downtown, but there's other areas that if we don't spend some money now to resurface them, they'll become reconstructed. And we're seeing at a point now, we're able to spend ten cents on a dollar to re, rebuild the street, as if we wait for a reconstruct, we're spending, you know, ten, you know, five to ten times more than if we do a resurfacing. So, it's a balancing act of trying to make sure we get at these resurfacings before they turn into reconstrucks. That's a long answer, I don't know if that helps.
Maybe you can share with the board and public, in the last ten years, how's the budget changed towards road repair?
Yeah, I think from the last ten years, we've gone from about six fifty up to a million dollars, so it's, it certainly has grown substantially over the last, uh, five years.
And one of the things that I, I would like us to consider is, as we add the roads, whatever percentage we're adding, we should probably be adding that percentage to this budget as well. So, we put a new road in, we have two extra miles, why don't we have a percentage that we're increasing the budget by that? Um, maybe not for this budget, for the next budget, that we might wanna consider something along those lines, if that makes sense.
Okay, board members, any other comments in regards to the budget? I would echo everything Todd said with regards to the work that was put in for the budget. Uh, we did spend a lot of time, um, working through this, trying to fix, take care of, and, and address all the needs of the community, and one I would love to say we could do more of it now is roads. Um, we do have to have a better plan for that moving forward, and, um, I think that's been a topic, since I was on the Public Works Committee several years ago, we started to talk about that, and we have increased that. Um, we should have a little bit better plan, though, um, out into the future. Other comments in regards to the board, or budget, otherwise, I'd look for a motion to approve budget as presented.
Well, on the roads, I think that there's been a little bit of improvement of late, we're requiring a lot more from the contractors when they build the roads, and developers. Uh, back in the seventies, eighties, some of these roads that were extended, they didn't do a good job of improving the base and et cetera, and those roads are the ones that we're wrestling with right now. Our newer roads are a little bit more expensive, and I think they'll last a little bit longer, but, yeah, that, we're paying for the sins of the past right now. But, that aside, I'd recommend, make a motion, we approve the resolution approving the 2019 Village of Oneokee budget.
Okay, we have a motion by Phil Williams.
Second.
We have a second by Susan Springman. Any other comments? Todd?
One note on the, on the roads, I'm glad you brought up the, the concerns that you have in your particular area, and the photos help. What I would urge you and any resident to do, uh, it doesn't have to be at budget time either, but midway through the year, if things are, if you catch things that are of concern to you, potholes or what have you, there's opportunities for us to do some spot maintenance. There's also opportunity for us, as we learned about things earlier in the year, for Kevin to work with his committee and work with his budget planning process, to try to, try to find a way to fit those into the plan. Um, sometimes midway through the year, we might find a successful bidding on a road, on some road projects, to the point where maybe there's a couple extra things we can do that we didn't initially plan, that's not unusual from time to time, and knowledge of the concerns that you have of your roads, or even a, a curb section that's damaged or what have you, is, is sometimes something we can address.
The MyOneokee app, the pictures that Mary provided, um, the MyOneokee app on phones, you can actually take a picture of what you have for a problem, and it links right to, and they know exactly where the picture was taken from your location, um, so if there is a pothole or an issue that you're seeing, street light out, whatever it may be, um, that's a, a very quick and easy way for us to be, you know, to be able to address those for you.
Okay, anything else?
And those pictures do look concerning, and I think we should take a look at that area again and just assess what the situation is.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion, a second. Um, call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Ayes have it? Did we need a roll call on that, are we up there?
No.
Okay. Next, we've got discuss and take action, and, discuss and take action on operator license application for, I'm gonna murder this, I'm sure of it, Eric Shelley DaVinci, DaVente, Carrie Werline, and Justin Heinbecker.
The applications in your packet have been reviewed by the police department staff subject to our policy on alcohol, on operator license applications. Um, all three have been recommended for approval, subject to successful completion of an approved beverage server training course and final review by the police department.
Okay, look for a motion on this, unless somebody has an issue.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Motion by Sam Ballack.
Second.
Second by Joe Zitzelberger. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Ayes have it? Next, under new business, discuss and take action on proposed annexation of school district property and Mueller, I'm sorry, it's actually Miller property.
Renee's bringing it up, but, yeah, that, that works fine. Uh, this is just, this is action that the Plan Commission and the Joint Planning Commission and the Town Board have all recommended that the Village Board move forward with, and it's really annexing in a couple of different properties. Uh, the primary focus was regarding, uh, public safety and, and response time for our, for our Oneokee Police Department. The proposed, uh, area, a lot one-lined in blue, which includes, uh, includes the Simon Crestway through the school property, and then, uh, all the way up Highway Q, down to, uh, the roadway down to, to A Street, also including the, the soccer fields and, and the baseball fields, excluding, uh, Endress Manufacturing. And then the other area that we're cleaning up is, uh, some road right-of-way issues along Woodland Drive, uh, you know, just, uh, east of, of County Trunk Q. There's another a, area that I identified as part of the planning process, and there's some areas up on Highway nineteen, uh, Main Street, those are a little bit more complicated in terms of jurisdictional issues, we're continuing to work through that, but there's a recommendation out there, in order to make some clarification so that, uh, our police department's able to respond, uh, as the first person that gets called and needs response time, so it speeds up our response. I think to, in terms of having our, our responses is quicker, it can be quicker than, on average, than the sheriff's department. So, with that, uh, staff recommends approval as presented to the, as recommended by the Joint Planning Commission.
Okay, board members, any questions?
You do, you do have an ordinance, I think, that's been placed in front of you, that's-
Yeah. Kevin, did you talk about the Miller property?
We've talked about this for quite a while.
Oh, yeah, uh-
The school over on that end?
Yeah, here's, here's the other property that, it's part of, uh, an approval for, uh, a house that was built on, on Woodland Drive, there was an agreement put in place, uh, with the Millers who live there, that when the area around it is developed, uh, they are required to annex into the village, and since the, the area around it has now been annexed into the village and, and planned for development, which the Kilkenny West, adjacent to the school, uh, they are required, and, and so they have signed off and agreed to annex into the village, so that is part of this ordinance as well.
Board members, any questions?
Is there a, a sidewalk, uh, close to the Endress?
Yeah, it's part of the-
I see that's part of the roadway.
That is, is part of the, the Q improvements, we did add some pedestrian improvements, including a sidewalk that runs along in front of Endress. It didn't matter if it was in the town or the village, that really didn't have an impact, but that, that sidewalk will now be within the village.
Any other questions? Okay, so-
It's just approve, if you're gonna, uh, it would be a motion to approve the annexation ordinance.
Which is at your seats.
I made the motion, we approve the, uh, attached annex as presented and the ordinance as presented, dated September thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
A motion by Phil Williams?
Second.
Second by Susan Springman. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Ayes have it? Then under old business, we have discuss and take action on forward development, group requests for Tiff participation in Woodland Crest development. The Village Board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified bit, public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The Village Board may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So, we'd look for a motion to go into closed session.
They'd want it going to closed session.
Motion by Susan Springman.
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Roll call, vote Julie.
Joe Zitzelsberger?
Yes.
Sam Ballwood?
Yes.
Sue Springman? Plus, the random is absent. Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Aaron Moran?